And great day. I'd like to call the Montgomery County IBA meeting to order at three thirty two to be standing and say they're glad. Thank you. Um, next on the agenda is minutes from the August eighth meeting. Anybody notice anything that needs to be corrected? You're good. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll offer it.
Thank you a second. Thank you all in favor. Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone need to abstain? Chairs, communications, there are none. Public comments. Anybody on? No. No public comments. Chairs report, the only chairs report, I'd like to thank Mark for filling in for me last month. I heard he did a great job. So thanks, I appreciate it. Uh, directors report.
Now, just one quick update. We did schedule the MCEC meeting uh for September twenty third. Is that in relation to the MTA? Um, transition. The resolution, I'm gonna set it up for the capital of town generally.
Correct. It's Joe Scott Swears. I wonder what if it is done as we try to sign, uh, October.
I just want to let you guys update on that. We've come a long ways to get this.
It should be a relatively quick easy meeting on the twenty third. That'd be back to us. Or no, we're done. Perfect. We can all say. Uh, financial report.
Yes, so the financials are included in your packet. Um, there really is nothing unusual to report. Um, very little transactions. Just need a motion to approve the transactions from the office.
I would like to know. Second. A second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Who's abstaining? Chairs. Revolving loan fund.
Yes, so the revolving loans on the report, on the report, put it in your packet. Um, again, nothing to report. Everyone is current. Uh, you'll see number five with no payment history. That's because.
So I did call Ken earlier today, so I'll just share with everyone, you know, one of the things is when we have to do our big report. At the end of the year, we do have to talk about the jobs that doesn't impact us when it comes to the reparent revolving loan. So anywhere where you saw that there was no jobs that were created, um, this doesn't impact us on our ratings or anything that goes over. That was my only concern when I called Ken today.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so annually, um, I do, uh, go out to visit each one of the businesses. We do, we do a semi-annual report. Uh, reporting process, um, at the beginning of the year and then. Uh, the summertime, I usually go out and visit them, uh, you know, just to show face and, um, just talk to them, collect all the information that we need. And then I do a monthly or I do a annual report still. So that's also included in your packet and, uh, where Matt was talking about, um, the column job numbers being that yes or no. Uh, it is something, you know, obviously that we track. Um, it is a, you know, legality, uh, recommendation in the, when we do a loan. Um, that they create so many jobs on. There are a few here that haven't created them, um. You know, but they're shut off. Yes. And so, you know, unless there's other major financial issues, we usually don't, um, you know. Your column, um, you know, or or something like that.
Any other questions? Sheila, I really appreciated the notes.
Yeah.
So also, there's a letter, um, from Janet, um, included in your packet. That's John. I just have that now. So other than that, I don't have anything.
We don't need a motion on that, correct?
No.
Any questions for Sheila? Great. Marketing report.
Yeah, so marketing report, obviously still active on Facebook. Things out there. The thing that we just did was with the site selection magazine. I just, um. Putting your guys' hands, but just online too is a, you know, national site selection magazine. And they did a upstate report and we were in there marketing the area, um, family site that's all available. So this is the site. At some point too, we'll also have a banner ad that comes across here. And then, you know, if you haven't seen it in the, um, printed version, this is the online version here that you can see. And, you know, obviously gets a ton of views from developers around the, around the country, Canada. So. Hoping this will generate some needs in the county.
We'll be able to tell if this is a. Be able to tell on our website, exactly what type of work we're hitting. Program that we're using, um, on the backend of our website to see which companies are hit. It's pretty, pretty helpful. It's pretty telling. So that's, uh, share with you one of those reports that are next week. So we can see where we get.
That's great to have.
Obviously still working with. Things of that nature. So this will definitely see if, uh, we'll be able to tell if we can update that. Marketing on the backend, so. Also, um, tourism related, we had our IAC event. Guys want to see a video or?
Sure.
I'm not going anywhere. So we had fifteen people sign up, um. So the surveys, you got actually a lot of people love it, but. Make it bigger, better next year, maybe do a longer ride, um, or paddle and or do it overnight. Ready?
Set up for next year or?
Yeah, we have fifty next year. So people seem to love this event. So this is one of the videos put together on the.
Ian did a good job with that drone.
So yeah, so we did that, put together a bunch of other clips for, you know, people that want to share off, shorter clips, um, so that went really well. Um, also, we had Eddie went out and did some drone footage of Candy Harry. Nelson, this is a DRI and their more applications, um, and Alap also on the site. He's there, he's on site, side and outside of the film. So we'll have some.
You had cops and joggers this past.
Oh yeah, cops and joggers, Natalia Fest was this test. We had cops and joggers had their, the most participants that they've ever had too. They had hundred and fifty five people.
Jobs are out there.
Yeah, we sponsored that.
Like a bank.
Police. Five and ten K. Natalia Fest went well, but except for the rain. So that first portion. You had a lot of people stop in the tourism office and you had a photo booth set up there that printed out. So those same people. People love it. We had like a scavenger hunt, go around, get pictures, you came back nice. Um, so people love that. If it wasn't for weather, I think it'd be wild. But, uh, that's usually a chance biggest event. But the rain, it just had a little bit of luck. So you're there till seven o'clock and. Kind of started showing up after, but that's a whole lot of the bad. Next one, we have the sleaze at Burbine. So that's the disco. Um, tournament at the Burbine Forest. Uh, that always shows out there in the past. So just to be there doing that and then it's on Burbina, I'll stay out again. So that's a great job working on that. Get a lot of new things added in this year. Promote it last year and add some things, change the times. Decoration, people involved and that's how.
So without the events that are going on, like in Amsterdam, the office, the tourism office, how are you doing on a right, like a, in general basis?
I mean, I'm gonna ask.
People coming.
Not a ton of people come in during the day. You see a ton of bikers going by though. So our next move, you know, especially for next year. Find a way to get those people to stop. I guess signage made up of D W and put by the bike path on the rentals there.
Yeah, it's definitely a good location. I just think, especially with bikers, they're going by. At high speed than walkers and so it's tough to capture them, you know, uh, get them inside. But I think increasing improved signage, free water, that sort of thing, get people in there. Once people are in there, they love it, they love it. Yeah, we've got a map where people, it's what they're, you know, where they're from. Uh, I was in there, a couple from Tennessee and just stopped at the boat. Uh, in Amsterdam and then walked across the bridge and then we're going up to dinner.
It's a great location. Anything else marketing wise?
Should get a giant pumpkin this time of year and have people sign where their location. Bonne Bailey Books auction. Today was the book giving auction. Yes.
There's a purple.
I probably did, pretty much.
Anything else? Um, any other suggestions for video? Alright, perfect. Um, at this time, I'd like to ask if we can go into executive session to, um, discuss, uh, businesses financials. So can we have a motion? A second? A second? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll go into executive session.
The under executive section, no act been mistaken. We'll move on to unfinished business. The first one was been dealing with last month was the log city one LLC.
Yes, just as you guys are aware, we did have a public hearing scheduled for this past Monday in relation to that project. We got word from the applicant that he received water and sewer rates in relation to housing development in the town of Anjuran. And the fact that the progress was slightly so it affected them in such a way that he was concerned about the project moving forward. So he decided to pull the public hearing. And wait to hear back from him as to what he decides going forward. So we should hear something from him that we hear to how the project reach scope and size or through the one that's supposed to be there.
Great. Any questions? Thank you. Exit twenty nine redevelopment project. Oh, that's the resolution sheet, sorry. So that was twenty four thirteen. Yes, this is the resolution approving a letter of interest on one oh two Church Street LLC.
Yeah, this is just a letter of interest mid one oh two Church Street LLC as it relates to the like to make is on the eastern side of the exit twenty nine redevelopment project.
Any questions on this? We need a motion to for the resolution. I'll offer a second, I'll second a roll call vote on that, please Andy.
Yes, Matt Beck.
Yes.
Mark Walten.
Aye.
Chair Reese.
Aye.
The publicist just Edward Waugh. Mr. Cairen.
Aye.
Wiltshire Pass.
New business. So the first is the twenty twenty five MTA MC IDA budget. This came to us with a positive recommendation from the governance committee. Again, it's in our packet. There weren't any questions. I governance, I'll open it because I know one of our board members wasn't here for governance. Any questions on the twenty twenty five MC IDA budget? No, it's a, I looked at it previously. Excuse my question, thank you. Great. Then we need a motion to approve. Yes, there's a motion, a rule for it.
Yep.
Motion to approve the budget. Second, all in favor, aye. Anyone opposed? Abstain? Aries. There is one piece on the new business. We do need to do a resolution to change the terms of the loan for lease shops.
Correct. We were approached by by lease shops. They're going through some sort of corporate restructuring and relocation. They're currently in the town of town. And they're going to be relocating the actual, the actual lease applications over to the V shops location. With that, they would like to come in and provide a hundred thousand dollars to pay for their principal on the existing loan. And they would also like to restructure their current payment from approximately twenty five hundred dollars a month down to sixteen hundred dollars a month with all the terms and collateral they need to stay on them. So what we would have to do is hear a recommendation, should be a recommendation to the county legislature for approval or denial of this. And then that would be forwarded to the legislature for final action of that matter.
So I would make the motion to send as a positive recommendation to refinance a loan for lease shops based on what they asked for. I'll second the second, we don't really, we do roll call vote, sorry.
Just sorry, Matt Beck.
Yes.
Mark Walten.
Aye.
Chair Reese.
Aye.
From the side of the place.
Aye.
Edward Waugh, Mr. Cairen.
Aye.
Uh, Wiltshire Pass.
All right, then all we need is a motion to adjourn. Second, Mark Walten, great job. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone to call us? All right, we're done, we're done.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your voice.
We're going to continue.